Mike Payne, who is beaming in from outside of Simsbury. Mike, feel free to speak up if you're not hearing anything or jump in anytime. I know it's often hard to participate remotely, but welcome. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will begin with public audience. Is there anyone who wants to speak in public audience? Mary.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you. It's nice to see all of you and thank you for your service. I'm just going to move this and lower it. I appreciate being here and it's like old times. Getting back on a Saturday morning. I've had a bunch of workshops. I'm here today as a president of SCTV, which means I get paid twice as much as all of our volunteers at SCTV, which is nothing, but I want to thank them and thank the town for your past support. Simsbury's gotten about $5,000 a year from SCTV and we're very grateful to the space that you provide at Eno. I'm here today to ask you for even more support and an increase in support. As you know, Simsbury Community Television relies solely on volunteers, volunteer contributions, and thanks to some of you have made contributions personally as well as the town. And we get a little bit of money from the cable companies, but that's dwindling every year as people cut the cord and go off of cable. So we're really in a difficult situation this year. And as you know, we broadcast all the town meetings that we can. We do most of those live. That takes volunteers, that takes equipment. We're trying to expand some of our live coverage to the Board of Ed when they take their meetings on the road, so that is going to be requiring additional equipment and additional volunteers. So we just want you to know how grateful we are for the 5,000, but as you can see, we're doing a lot with it. And we really need the additional funding from the town to keep operating and expanding. So I know you have a lot of budget pressures, but as you consider, think that the town residents benefit greatly by the service that we provide. So thanks for your time today.
Thanks, Mary. Anybody else in the public audience tonight? This morning? Okay. All right, so we're going to begin with the overview of the budget and I'll start with Maria.
Great, good morning. Thanks, everyone, for joining us on a Saturday. Really looking forward to today. I think that the leadership team has put together just a lot of great information for you to help walk through the budget. I wanted to do just a quick kickoff this morning, a recap of the revenue budgeting assumptions that we used. Yeah, I think it might be hard for me to think. With the setup, it might be. Thank you. Thanks. So again, just a quick recap on our revenues. So our grand list growth, we increased by about a little over 2.6%. Based on our current mill rate, that would generate about 2.4 million in new revenue. That's a really substantial number for us. Most of our area towns in the valley saw new growth around 0.5% to just about 1%. So for a non-reval year, again, this is really outstanding. I happened to bump into David Gardner this week and he was sharing with me that he doesn't think that we've seen a number like that in a non-reval year since about 2005. So really significant. That is, again, framing up and teeing up the budget for us in terms of, you know, taking off a lot of pressure, in terms of minimizing tax impact and taking off, you know, some pressure from our property owners in town. Again, the major drivers in that for real estate anthology, most of that was complete for October 1. The ridge at Talke Mountain, a large chunk of that was complete for October 1. And for personal property, about 85% of the Tobacco Valley Solar Project was done around October 1. So those were some of the key drivers. And then also our assessor's office, a lot of credit to Francine and her team. They've really been trying to catch up on permitted projects that were renovation or rehab and really trying to go out and inspect that property and catch that new growth now as opposed to waiting for reval. So again, really, really great news here on our grand list growth. We continue to use the budgeting assumption of a tax collection rate at 98.5%. As you might recall, typically based on historical collection rates, that's around 99.5%. So that does, you know, really provide for a planned fund balance contribution for us, which we'll discuss at the end of the day today. We've also used the same mill rate assumption for our motor vehicle taxes we have for real estate and personal property. And then we've also used the governor's proposed budget for state revenue. So most of those revenues were flat with the exception of our ECS grant, and that's actually a slight increase of about $190,000. All right. And again, just a snapshot, again, that most of our property, or most of our revenue is derived from the property tax, so that is the largest portion. Excellent, thanks. So with that, we are going to jump into general government. I would encourage folks, if you do have questions, please speak up. Definitely let us know. That's, you know, in part why the department heads are here today. And we'll kick off with Erica for the Town Clerk's Office.
I just want to thank in advance all the staff who's spending their Saturday with us.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Start off nice and easy for you guys.
You've got to ease us into the...
Yeah. You know, we don't want to rush right into it, so. I'm the Town Clerk, Erica Butler, which I think I've met all of you, so I think we're all familiar with each other. I'm here to present my budget for fiscal year 2021. Proposed operating budget is 239, 323, a 3.03% increase or 7,028. We currently have three full-time employees in the Town Clerk's Office, myself and two assistants. As far as our services and programs, pretty much status quo from year to year with the Town Clerk's Office. The difference is that as technology advances, we're doing a lot of things more modern, a lot more programs, new software that we're using. So everything's becoming a lot more technical. So it's not as simple as it used to be with pen and paper. You know, we're using the computer for mostly everything we do in the office now. I'm excited to say we're now accepting credit cards. We just started that last week, which is a huge advancement for us. We're already seeing some excitement swarming around that. People don't mind, people don't mind paying the convenience fee to use their credit card, which I assumed was the case just for the convenience of it. A lot of, for example, marriage licenses, when the couples come in, they're usually not from town, so they're not familiar with the area banks. And for them to leave, to go get cash and come back, it was just something I really wanted to put an end to. So I'm really thrilled about that. We've even seen people use it for filing releases of mortgages on the, when a resident comes in to do it. For vital records, we've already seen it. So I'm very excited about that. So yeah, so, you know, everything we do, I won't go through all the different things that we handle in the office because, like I said, it's pretty much the same from year to year. Let's see. Issuing licenses. One thing I do want to touch upon, and I will in just a moment, is, let's skip over to here. All right. So areas of focus. This year, we'll be applying for another $7,500 grant for the State Library Historic Documents Preservation Program that the state puts out. We're glad to get another $7,500 this year. When I first started, we, I believe we were getting 4,500, so we've seen an uptick in this, which is awesome. This year, I'm excited. We're doing a project, which I've already started with some special, my special revenue funds, just to get an idea of how the project was going to work. We're revamping a lot of our land record index books. They're in bad shape. I'm trying to get away from just throwing stickers or, you know, labels on books and things are fading. I'm trying to really get our records in our books to look more professional and to hold up. These are permanent records, you know. So it's going to take some time, but with this grant, I'm going to be able to do all of our land record index books and they'll be engraved. And not only will they hold up, they'll just look more professional, so I'm really excited about that. We're also going to do some of our vital records, our indexes to our vital records, which are also permanent records. Those books are literally falling apart. So those are going to be, the pages will be taken out, microfilmed, and put into permanent books through our vendor. I'm really excited about that as well. We're making progress in our vault, which is super exciting for me. I know it sounds kind of corny, but it's been my goal since I've started. It's a tough goal because we have records dating back to the 1700s in that vault and it's a slow process. There is only three of us and it's something we can only work on when we have the time. So I've been with the office almost four years now and we've been really just eating away at it and I'm really happy with the progress we've made thus far. We're actually in the midst of doing a renovation in the vault to complete the high-capacity shelving project, which will go on the opposite side of the vault. We're going to be doing the flooring to get the flooring up to code. We were cited many years ago for the carpet we have in the vault, so we're finally putting tile in there. We're painting, which the walls are just in bad shape right now, so we'll be doing some patchwork and painting, some new lighting over our new workspace. And once this is done, a big area for us this year is going to be, we've created a records management program in our office. So everything is clearly marked with retention. We have a process in place. Nothing gets put away until it's marked with the retention so that it's not an issue 10 years from now, do we have to keep this? Do we not have to keep this? So going forward, we're in great shape. And going back, we're almost there with getting rid of stuff that was just held on to because there was no time to get to it. It wasn't stuff that needed to be kept, but it's a slow process because you have to go page by page because there could be something in there that is permanent. So my staff has been wonderful with helping with this. Once our shelving is done, our goal now will be to put everything on the units in a way that makes sense and is clearly marked on each unit and to have an inventory of what is in the clerk's office so that it's as simple as doing a search and I can tell you exactly where something is. I can tell you if it's been destroyed because we were able to destroy it, how long it has to be retained for. It's definitely possible to have a program like this in place and it just makes everybody's life so much easier and it gives me confidence in knowing what's in my vault. You know, when I first started, you know, could we have something in there? Yes. I can't tell you for sure. And I, you know, trying to find it, there was no system to find anything, you know. So this is a huge goal of mine and we're nearing the end and then it'll be basically just an upkeep of it. You know, the hardest part will be over. We'll be in the maintenance process after that and that doesn't take as much time. It's going backwards. That takes time. So I didn't mean to spend so much time on that, but it's something I'm really passionate about and it's a big goal of ours. So, you know, that's where our grant money's going towards, our special revenue funds, and that's what it's intended for. So I'm really excited. Another thing with moving forward in our office, the state, currently we have an electronic birth registry system, so we register and issue births from '02 forward through an electronic system with the state. They are rolling out, once again, they tried this a few years back, a death registry system, which Connecticut is behind on this. Most surrounding states already have a system like this in place. They are doing a pilot program right now with some towns. I heard that it's about July that we'll probably be going live with it and we'll be issuing permits and so burial cremation, certified copies, we'll be registering the deaths and it'll all be electronic. So the funeral homes will be doing their part, the ME will be doing their part, and we'll be receiving the certificates electronically. So again, you know, when you say, yes, the Town Clerk has been issuing burial permits since forever, the way we do it is just so different now, you know. It's not a matter of taking the burial and using the typewriter to type in the information. I mean, there's more that goes into it now just because of the technical aspect of it. But with that being said, there's also some convenience to it as well. When someone comes in, we're able to print the records from the system versus taking the permanent record book and making the copies and disrupting the original copy. So I'm excited about that. I hope the state has perfected it this time. It did not go well a few years ago, but I hear that this one is definitely going in a better direction, so I'm excited about that. Budget highlights? There's not much. So that's a good thing. Just our salaries, your typical, you know, general wage and step increases, so nothing too striking here, which is good. Trends and challenges? We are in the midst now of an election year, a big election year. I actually just sent out ballots for the primaries this, just yesterday, for people that are traveling outside of the country or in the military. So we've already, we're already in it. You know, the primaries aren't until, there are two, and you know, we were only expecting one, but there's, there is a Republican primary. So we'll have two primaries on April 28th. And like I said, I've already issued, started issuing the, and those are electronic ballots as well. So that gets back to the, you know, the fact that we've moved on and we're out of the, you know, a lot of the paper stage. For those people, we can now issue them electronically. They have to return the original, the hard copy, but we do issue them electronically. And then on April 7th, we'll start issuing regular ABs for the primaries. But then for fiscal 2021, we have, you know, we could have our August primaries, we have, and then we obviously have the election in November, which I'm suspecting is going to be a big one for us as far as issuing absentees. I think for the last presidential election, we did around 1,800, but we've seen an uptick in people that are applying for absentee ballots because they've become more aware of it. People confuse absentee with early voting. So with that, we get people that come in that think it's early voting and then they end up just voting absentee because, I mean, there's really, there's nothing to really stop them from doing that. So that, because of all the media with early voting, we've gotten a lot of people coming in because of that as well. And then in this community, we have a lot of people that travel, you know, for work and that, a lot of students that go away for school. So I'm suspecting, you know, we could do up to 2,500 and with three people, that's a lot. It pretty much consumes your whole day. It doesn't leave a lot of time to do anything else during the day just because there are so many steps in issuing absentee ballots. It's, the state is still a little archaic in that process. It's, there's a, the process is very daunting.
Really? I can't imagine.
So, you know, they just like to have a lot of steps and everything, so. But there are a lot of checks and balances in place, which is great. I mean, I think that's part of why they haven't gotten away from the way we're doing it right now is because there are so many checks and balances. But with that, the process takes a while. So this could result in some additional hours, but we had asked for this last budget cycle to have this extra because of this change in increased number of absentee ballots. So I didn't need to ask for anything more this year. For overtime, we should be just fine with what we have. It's just that it's a possibility that we may have to use, you know, Friday afternoons just to catch up with stuff that we couldn't get to during the week. Okay, so now I'm on to registrars. There was no reason for them to come in this morning just for a couple of slides. They have a proposed operating budget of 132, a little over a 5% increase or 6,500. What is included in this is a proposed 2.35 wage increase for registrars effective 1-1-2021. I believe that it's been quite some time that they've gone without an increase and is it surrounding?
Two years.
Two years? And they've, yeah, and I think they've, you know, done some look into what area towns are receiving. They've asked for an increase for program supplies to provide lunch for poll workers, a $4,000 increase to equipment maintenance for additional memory cards for the presidential election, and $600 increase to conferences and education for their required training. And we have Susan in there now, who is newer, so I imagine she's had some courses that she has to take to kind of get up to speed. I can say that they're doing great as a team and so far, my relationship with the registrars has been great, which makes our job so much easier through the election process. They're so easy to work with and I hope they feel the same way about me. I imagine they would say the same. Yeah, they're just, we make a great team, so I think this election season will be easier because of that.
Just a quick question.
Yeah. Oops. Oh, let me go back.
Not to be my typical self, but 4,000 bucks for memory cards? Our memory cards are like 50 bucks?
It's, um...
Are these like, we got to buy them through the state so they cost $1,000?
It's, yes. It's, I don't know the details of it, but it's for their, it's specific ones for the ballot readers. Yeah, I know.
So somebody's buddy's making money off this? Okay.
Yep.
We're retrofitting the ballot machines.
It's garbage. It's a SanDisk memory card.
They got a preferred vendor through the state, so.
We can buy new machines.
My point, exactly, that's my point, is once again, loaded government.
And then they just listed here, you know, we'll have our congressional primary Republican, our presidential election, and then the budget referendum. So they will have a busy cycle with elections for 2021. But like I said, they're, they make a great team. We all make a great team and I think, I think we'll get through it just fine.
Great.
Any questions?
Other, yeah, questions?
I did have one on the, or on the revenue side. Help me, what is assessor's airplane registration fee?
We were just asking that. Yes. Um...
Sorry, that caught my eye.
So the assessors, as far as actual dollars taken in, they don't take in a whole lot of money. They're the ones that, right, create what we can make money off of. But they, they use our registrar, our register to ring in their fees just because it doesn't make sense for them to have that type of software over there. So yeah, the, because we have the hangars, they are required to register their planes and the fees have just considerably changed. So now they have all these different sizes of planes that you get charged on and, and I think it's once a year that people with these planes have to come in and pay this fee.
And I noticed there wasn't anything last year, so is this a change in policy or did we just catch it or?
So this...
Again, it's not a lot of money, but it's just, it didn't exist in 19 and now here it is in 20.
No, we have been collecting those fees. It's just that the fees have increased.
It's a zero, it's an actual...
They have been lumped into our miscellaneous the way, the way we rang it in before.
Okay.
But with the new fees, I've done a breakdown in our system so that it's more obvious what it is. So we've been trying to do that a lot, too.
I get no concern, it just caught my eye.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Yeah.
Is there discretion in what we charge on any of these fees or are these all sort of mandated?
Mostly everything is state mandated. There's, I'm trying to think of anything in our office that isn't even just our procedures on everything, pretty much is. I mean, there...
And we get a cut and then you got to remit some of it to the...
So every, every month, we, I wouldn't even, you wouldn't even imagine what we have to do as far as breaking this money down to send it out to the state each, each month. We take in a lot of different types of fees and then every fee is broken down about 100 different ways. So the process, which Amy knows, the reporting that we do every month is pretty intense and about 25% of our fees go to the state every year. And then obviously, they, they get their portion of the conveyance taxes, which is, you know, 3/4 of a percent. So they get a lot of money from us, for sure. But, but yes, a lot of the fees are, you know, a big portion goes to the state.
I just have a question.
Yes.
Does the 6,500, the state and federal grants that we have in 20, that's blank, wiped out for, is that, is that the grant application that you're doing, that you were talking about, the 7,500?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, and so that actually is not used to offset operating expenses, so we are not showing that in the, in this particular chart.
Okay.
Where does he, where do you guys bury the cost for the...
Oh, I didn't know where that was going because we, because we do issue burial permits. We don't actually do the burying.
The burial cremation fee right there. Now, the, so when you do have an uptick in absentee voting and you have to bear the cost of the postage, where is it?
So the only, the postage gets paid out of our office, but the, the only postage we don't pay for is for ballots going out of the country or for military. We don't, that's, that postage is free, but for the ABs that we issue, you know, just your normal ABs that we were issuing.
For college.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's all built in and I think it's been consistent with the, now that we built in the postage for...
Right, right, so we have, coming up under the general government budget, we have a consolidated postage account, but then departments have a code to access it, so we're able to sort of get a sense of, you know, by department.
Who's spending what.
Right, by department who's spending what, but we just have a sense of like how.
But I'm just curious, when you mentioned that there could be a, it's just more of education.
Oh, yeah, and actually, I believe, we actually use the registrar's code when we issue the ABs. It actually comes out of their budget. I mean, I know it's all within one now, but when we use the meter, we use their, their code for it, so it'd actually show up under the registrars.
And that's good, so the military are free, we're not charged for that.
Correct.
And then interestingly, return as well, they don't pay?
Yes, on the return envelope as well. So the only difference is now, a lot of them get them electronically because it's obviously more convenient and they get it quicker, so they're not provided an envelope. So if, in those scenarios, then yes, they would have to pay to have it sent back. But, you know, they're just happy to get them electronically. Like I said, I mailed out, you know, I emailed out some on, yesterday, and they've already gotten them and probably are already voting and sending them back, so, which is great. You know, it leaves a lot more time to get the ballots back.
With, just one more question. We had a huge uptick in same-day registration last time.
Yes.
Has that been accounted for here as well?
Yeah, so, yeah, there, obviously for the primaries, there won't be same-day registration because you have to be registered with the party like three months prior.
Presidential.
But yes, I believe Karen and Sue took that into account because there was, and they have to, they have to staff for same-day registration as well, yeah.
That was a massive effort last time and that was our first time through it, I think.
Yeah, and I imagine with the presidential election, that's going to be probably a big one. People that are coming in, you know, and registering for the first time and then wanting to vote as well, so.
Yeah.
So yeah, I believe, I believe Karen and Sue took, you know, took a look at that to make sure that that was accounted for.
Did they improve the controls on that? Because last time I checked, we were, we were checking that locally, so it was hard to vote twice in Connecticut, but if you came from Mass, there was no check that day.
Yeah, so I do believe what ends up happening is there's a log and they actually have to make phone calls to the previous.
Well, because it's in Connecticut, right?
I, that I don't know for sure, but they make phone calls to make sure they're not still registered in the other location while the person is standing there, so.
So it's a labor-intensive effort.
It is.
My recollection of last time, it was, we did that locally, but if they were out of state, there was an after-the-fact check.
Gotcha.
The question was whether that was getting done or not, so, because we're so close to Massachusetts.
Yep.
It was interesting to me, so.
Yeah.
Because you could basically vote in Mass and come down and vote here and maybe somebody catches it a week later.
Or not, not till after the fact, yeah.
Who bears the, the cost of the voting machines? We do, I mean, we haven't seen a budget for that, right? I mean, it's, we didn't, like, those were, the ones we used this past election were the ones we had for the last budget year before.
We all have, yeah.
What's the...
Like life expectancy.
Thinking about long-term strategic planning, what are we going to be required to buy? Is there any conversations around technology?
Yeah, I...
Different stages, what to find for this, whatever.
I don't know if the, the ones we have obviously are ones approved by the state, but there may be some overall conversation on, in general, updating the ones that we use throughout the state, you know, not just here locally, just because those have been being used for quite some time now, so.
Well, if the memory's 4,000, think about 4,000.
Well, that's what I was thinking, yeah. The machines are very, very expensive. We have 10 and we have, which allows for two for each polling place and two quote-unquote "extra," which if we do absentee ballot counting here, they're usually in here. But if they're being counted at the polls, then those are two extra in case some... But if they're being counted at the polls, then those are two extra in case something goes awry with one of the ones. So, you know, we're, we have the backup if we need it. But I imagine those aren't gonna last forever, so.
And last, we just, again, it's education.
Yeah.
Do we, do we ever, for anybody who's been through it, purchasing them, do we ever receive? Is there any money, federal, state at all for...
I don't remember when we got the machines.
I don't think so. I think we're responsible, yeah, yeah. I think in early February, you know, I reported, I, every February, I have to report how many we have, and, you know, and, and I believe the language states that, you know, the board, Board of Selectmen is responsible for it, to make sure that we have adequate, so.
I have a question. Erica, thank you.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it. Good luck today.
If Chris was to give you another question, because he did it.
All right, let's turn it over to...
You got the stone in one box, or a hole in it?
He missed another one. White stone in this box, and black stone in that one. Ridiculous. The gray stone, that stone doesn't count.
Coffee break.
At this rate, we're gonna be here till Tuesday.
Call the media out.
That's in fails. For the right, yeah, there you go. Where are your glasses?
Such a friendly girl, huh? Good morning.
Morning.
For the Board of Selectmen. I'm sorry, I forgot my glasses. For those of you, I think everyone knows me, my name's Rick Pizzano. I'm the IT manager. And this portion of the presentation is pretty much just geared towards IT. If you have any questions, feel free to just throw them away. And I'd pretty much go fast through it, it's really more questions and dialogue that I really would like to resolve some of the questions that you have about the IT infrastructure and questions in town. The three point nine one percent is pretty much based on some allocations in the budget for, you know, wages, some equipment, and a little piece of contractual services that we got. The IT budget is pretty much heavy on, pretty much support services, if you will, contractual. And I don't think that's gonna go away, it's gonna increase year by year. With this current staff of just two, we rely heavy on vendors on the outside for consulting services, and that's from data security all the way to migration of servers. Because there's just two of us to do all that activity, we just can't keep up. Erica brought up, you know, she's depending on technology more and more, and it's true. We just got done with migrating her office as well as the tax, and that took a period of about, planning and everything was probably like two and a half weeks. And that's with keeping on little borders and checks throughout the whole process. And that's not even to talk about the whole security piece, that has, has to exist, especially with Erica's records. Pretty much daily technology for all municipal facilities, water push control, public works. We assist, when able, with the Simsbury Housing Authority as well. Support on-prem, we pushed a lot of stuff already to the cloud base. We're, we're currently in the final stages of migrating to Exchange three sixty-five. That infrastructure change was due to the split where the school system and assured services were on Exchange. They went to Google, we're pretty much left to migrate where. The consensus was, let's just push it to the cloud, save us, we only have two guys, save on the services, so on and so forth. So that's at the final stages, with pretty no major mishap going to the cloud. We collaborate with every department, I mean, I can look around the room with all the departments we face, and we have a pretty much open dialogue with them, and whenever it's coming down the pike, we try to support them as best as we can. And we look at it, say, okay, do you need it on-prem, or can you put it in cloud? And we see that most, even the town clerk at this point, with the death records and one that, they're pushing that stuff always to the cloud, at the state level. So that's, it's a good thing. Website services, if I get this out of the way. We still control the, the website, just so you know about the management of the content. When we first went with Civic Plus, we pushed content management now out to the departments. It's not left up to IT. We do some strategic changes to it, but we pretty much let departments control their own little webpages, if you will. So like Erica, or for Colleen and Tax, they have their segment of the website. They could update the mill rates, they could put any type of information. They could release news and announcements to subscribers to the, to the website. So that's how that works out, and we just manage it from, from a top level. If they need help, they'll come and contact us. So that's, that's a really nice thing as well. Our ninety-three percent completion of support, we still get tickets, it's on-end stuff that happens, you know, from desktop hardware, software, helping with office equipment. We always, it seems like IT gets called into all that stuff, even copiers as well. But that's where that stats coming from. Oops, let me go back.
The arrow, just use the arrow.
There you go. Some of the focuses for 2021, cybersecurity. This is our, this is our third year. This is our third year with our cybersecurity employee awareness training program. We use NOBE four, they're out of Florida. We've had some great events not happen to us because we had our employee awareness training program going right now. And that's saved us a couple of times already. We're currently in a training module now, and the, the cycle is usually, we hit them with a couple of trainings, and then we go out and we fish them. So what we do is we actually send fake emails out there. And we're pretty good, we're below the average in government, the government platform, we're below that. We're less than five percent of being fished, if you will. So that's a good thing, and that shows that the, the training program is working for us. Security's always, and you hear it every day, is one of our focuses all the time. Two years ago, we upgraded our perimeters to new generation firewalls in appliances. So we're good there. Again, it's the education piece and the refreshing that we always try to go through. The partner that we have right now for our perimeters, they do allow training, that's online. So we, we, it's pretty good for us right there. Again, finding time to do those modules with them is another chore.
At this point, do you feel good about our threat assessment and having an outside vendor look at that? This is time to refresh it?
There is, and I think there's some money in the capital fund that's coming up for next year, that we want to revisit that again. Right now, we are partners with MSI SAC, which is a homeland security nonprofit, and they do quarterly scans against us, they're vulnerability scans. And we pretty much get a good report from them, and they'll tell us what to address or not. And actually, a quick story is, there was one public-facing IP that was giving us, or gave them, a warning. So we figured out what it was, and it was a device for, I don't want to deluge too much information here, but it was something that, it was kind of weird that it was doing it. And it took probably five days to really, you know, get it locked down, so that, that vulnerability went away.
But that's really important to stay on top of that.
Oh, yeah.
As you know, and the general public doesn't understand, the communication on our network and what goes in and out is public information.
Right.
Anybody that has the expertise knows where the vulnerabilities are if they go look. And any company, any house, any municipality. So the trick is, in cybersecurity, stay one step ahead of it and do your own scans and close down the ports and the vulnerabilities.
Right, and the, the employee awareness training that we're doing right now, there's a specific module, and that's to change the topic right now, Sean, but is that social engineering is becoming more and more prevalent. So it's not so much that, you know, those guys gotta know who you are and what you're doing, what your behaviors are before they even try to hack into you, right?
But the trick with that is, because we have to be and should be so transparent, they all know everybody's name, they know everybody's email address, they know your biographies. So they can get a lot of information on all of us, so it's easier to social engineer a municipality than it is a company sometimes.
Right. And for the website, too, is one of my things, there's a couple still stagnant IP addresses, I mean, email addresses out there, like you guys, for you folks. I just want to try, you know, it'll be a different dialogue, just to remove those and start going with just contact forms where they don't see the email address at all. And I know it's transparent, I understand that.
It frustrates people, but there's a reason for it.
Right.
We don't want to end up like Farmington.
Right.
So just quickly on the capital, it's actually, you'll see a cybersecurity audit, and it's actually year three of the plan.
Yep.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, but, so the quarterly testing that MSI SAC does is external, so penetration testing from the outside. Whereas that piece that you're seeing in the CNR is focusing on more on internal security issues, so testing our internal network, so that's the difference there.
And we haven't had one in, in a while, so, and I'm sure there's gonna be some little holes in there. Just with year after year, things go by, things change, people come and go.
Again, it sounds like you guys are doing a great job, and again, I don't want to go too deep here, but this space changes daily.
Yep.
It's the challenges, you know, so. And obviously, working closely with Amy on the fiscal controls, because even if they get in, if everybody does what they're supposed to do for the checks and ballots, they don't get anything.
Appreciate it. The next one, fiber optic build-out, this is really, the fiber optic build-out started back in thirteen, fourteen. And we're at our final piece of it. This is really a shared service piece that the town has with the Board of Ed and the town, and part of the fire district as well. We pretty much throughout Simsbury joined all fiber, so that means district-wide and townwide, we share the same line of fiber. That last piece right there is for Simsbury Farms Complex, problematic site to get to. But we finally, within the last three months, got fiber to the driveway of the building right there, of, of the complex. The next phase is, we incorporate engineering, because there, we had a project coming up. So then we'll conduit up to the building and then get the final hookup for... And that's one thing with the fiber, it's always involves somebody else that we have to work with, you know?
We're gonna get that all the way up to the pro shop, right?
Right, yeah.
Because that's really where the, not only at the, the pool complex, but also...
Right, that whole, that whole site will be lit up.
We've been trying to get that tackled for...
It's both buildings, and it's desperately needed.
Yeah, we've been hunting and pecking at solutions for half a decade now.
Right, so we're there, we're just waiting now for that final, the lighting piece. And then continuously updating disaster recovery plan. We haven't done it probably in a couple of years now, but that's a focus. It's a time-intensive operation to do. And pretty much what we'll do is, how we set it up the last time, we interview each department head, find out what the mission-critical IT functions are, how they do it, what their backup. If you didn't have IT, what would they do to still provide the service to the public? Would it be pen and paper, or whatever it may be? That's all part of the plan that we look at.
We overlaying that with the current disaster environment?
Yeah, yeah. And that also, there's a piece of that that actually gets part of the emergency operations plan for the town?
Yeah, because this new one, the pandemic exposure is different, right? Because if we have to shut the building down, how do we provide the service we're obligated to provide?
I could touch, touch on that, it's already here.
No, I'm sorry, I don't want, we don't need to go into it today, it's just, you know...
But there is, there is a reaction that we could quickly put in force.
Yeah.
Budget highlights, just pretty much salaries. The new thing in the budget is the twelve hundred added for overtime. The other person of the IT staff, Brett Marchand, he's in a contract union. And there was really no set funding for it. There was pretty much, you know, let Rick deal with it and see how I could go along with it. And it comes to a point where, you know, sometimes I'm not available, and we have to call on Brett to step in. And he steps in a lot, too, as well, so I don't think that's a, a large number at all. The six thousand dollar increase in tech programs, equipment, copiers, like I said, this also puts a little bit more money in the coffer for hardware replacements, such as the current one that we're working with is the Windows ten upgrades. Usually those, well, that Windows ten upgrade, just so you know, it's usually an in-place upgrade. We take and re-engineer the equipment, maybe buy another stick of memory, load ten, we're good to go. Or if that machine is just too old, we just go out and buy it.
How much does that memory cost? Don't answer that.
It wasn't that number that was up there. I thought I was gonna get hit with a question there, it was like, ah, it's not big. Couple initiatives here, CEGIS for law enforcement is always one that we always look at for. They're moving consistently. Actually, we just got a direction from the state that they're going away from a certain browser that now they have, we have to conform to what they need. So these little changes are always there for us to, to follow up on. Security assessments, take the appropriate actions that are needed. The mobile fleet is something that's, you know, coming more and more. Sean, you mentioned something, it's really a mobile fleet that we talk about, and how you could react to things, and how you manage that. We do have a mobile fleet, our management could be a lot better for that, so I'm sure you, we'll see that more.
When you talk about that, are you talking about loners, like things people can work from home?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and also, you know, cell phones, tablets, whatever.
Okay.
Laptops.
Can I just, do, do most employees have laptops in?
So the, the, the model that we have is department, all department heads have issued, town-issued equipment that are allowed to come into the network remotely. Outside of that, no one is really allowed at that point, so we put a cap on it, unless there is a special need, and that'll come through Maria's office, and then I get it. We evaluate it, again, we go to town-issued hardware and software, and it's pretty much locked down. So that's where we go with that.
So everybody, most people have desktop, like in...
In town hall?
Yeah, or in, or public work, whatever, all the...
Yeah, they're mostly desktops.
Okay, so no people, like, I brought this up before, only people with the laptops obviously can work from home. But you do have some, some loners available to people.
Yeah.
That they can bring home if they have to. Because I'm just thinking of what's going on right now. I brought this up again before, the capability, if something happened and people had to work from home, you know, how could we react to that?
So...
The problem, though, is, is we're in a base where the customer comes in and initiates the transaction, so working from home doesn't solve all of our problems. That's the problem with the municipal space. In, in the, in the, in the commercial space, your, your client can email you, and you can do some business. Here, you gotta walk in and talk to the town clerk to get that transaction started. So if you can't walk in and talk to the town clerk, the transaction never starts. So working from home isn't a solution.
Well, I, I'm just talking the general, even more administrative people, that, to keep the, keep things up and running, visible and accessible, even to tell you we're not open, you know, if you go to the website, just people to respond to stuff. That, that's just what I'm, you know, if we said everybody had to work from home...
We, they can't, that's the problem, we cannot provide most...
So then we would shut down, basically.
And are we legally allowed to, how long? There's, there's a lot of problems here in the municipal space, if we have to close this building, how do we get access to the services we're required to provide?
But it's good to know that there is a capability, A, for the tier administrative staff to work from home and keep the gears running, and that some potential people could work from home if they weren't a town clerk or, you know, something public-facing, which, you know, who knows what would happen with, that they could take a loner with security measures and perform that at home. That, that's all.
That function.
Yeah.
No, it is, and I, and I think that part is, I think the more, the stressful part of it for town is what Sean's saying is, because then, you know, someone has to show a face. So if town clerk opens up, and I don't want to go, but if town clerk opens up and tax opens up, so that's two people in there, well, who's gonna support those? So now you have an IT person. So now those people, if there is a quarantine basis, they really have to live here, right?
Yeah.
So it goes, it goes deeper, just like...
And it's EOC, right? We're in a whole different ballgame.
Yeah, I was just, was curious about the hardware.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just add to that quickly. So a large chunk of our workforce are hourly folks, and Sean indicated that it's the type of person that has a lot of, you know, counter to counter, or, you know, maybe over the phone to people. And so for us, with both wage and hour laws and our collective bargaining agreements, having those hourly people work remotely would be somewhat of a challenge for us. Where, you know, in addition to right now, it's just our upper-level members of the leadership team, as Rick described, that have the town devices. You know, if we had to go a little deeper, we do have some of our division heads who are also salaried, and a handful of professional staff members, who the nature of their work is such that, you know, if we were sort of in that crisis mode, they're sort of a, a next tier of people. We, again, based on the nature of their work and their salaried status, that we could probably go a little further into the organization with people being able to work from home if we were really in a crisis situation. But the hourly people do present somewhat of a challenge for us, yeah.
Thanks. Thank you.
And then the last bullet point there is, we're currently looking for a whole network storage refresh and disaster recovery solution. And then the last bullet point there is, we're currently looking for a whole network storage refresh and disaster recovery solution, and that's really for the backup piece of it that we're going in. And there is some money that's coming up this year that we'll be able to utilize. And that's the project right there. Pretty much the environment that we in is a, it's a hyper converged environment, it's all storage, D doop and data and everything else. It just crushes the, the data into really small pieces, so instead of having a multitude of servers, it's really down to like three little boxes that are for you in size. The best thing about this environment, it has built in backups and storage capabilities that will port it offsite, and currently that disaster recovery is in the data center at the high school, so. And that's it.
Didn't we, remind me, Rick, like two, three years ago, you had a pretty big budget allocation need for a conversion of something?
Yeah, that was, so the tale of that one is, that was three years ago probably, maybe we're in our fourth of that. It's probably a hundred and twenty-four thousand that we took up, and that was the current hyper converged environment, and that was a simplivity solution, which was a, pretty much at that time was a private company out of Boston. And they provided us all we needed, and the key piece was that backup piece that we could port offsite. Works great. The bad side is that they got bought by H P, it was a Dell product, so now H P won't stand it, won't stand by it. It ends support in hardware maintenance September of two thousand twenty-one. So what they want us to do is go to their new generation of hyper converged. So we're in negotiations with them to get, you know, how much is it going to cost us? Their first shot at it came back at like one seventy-six, which is a high number. So right now, we're just really shopping around and what's the best fit for us. We'd like to stay within the hyper converged environment, but.
It is, I can imagine the cost to, the large cost could be somewhat justified by a shift, a shift between technologies, you know, significant technologies, you know, going from going from tethered to wireless, I understand that, but going from one company, one internal company's version of the same technologies a little bit concerning.
And in the three years, a lot of them have gone to, they've really gone to a solid state type of storage, a lot of them are starting to go into flash, it just makes everything quicker. So now, you know, we just saw one solution, and their solution was just straight flash, there was no solid state drives in it at all, which is wild. So in those three years that have gone by, we're, we're actually, we're picking up, putting our boots on, and now it's like, we got new technology, but what's, what's the good fit for the purse, for the department for the personnel to support?
I have a question. Last year, I think you had talked about having a backup in another town?
Mm-hmm.
Is that in place?
So one of the initiatives is that, in other towns looking at the same thing, we're all in the same fiber backbone from C E N. And C E N does allow towns to store information anywhere they want, really, it's just really getting approval from the other town. So we've talked to the group that we belong to in Connecticut, it's called G M I S, G M I S, all I T managers, professionals, all from municipalities. And that's been a talk, it's like, okay, if you want to dump your box in Manchester or wherever, that's all you need is to have that technology, that box, and just port it over there, and then use our existing fiber to get there.
So we're not there yet?
Not there yet. We could be there, though.
Okay.
Right now, we just took it that we're porting it two miles away at the high school.
Okay.
But that's, that's something that, the infrastructure is there, and it wouldn't be that expensive, there are some costs, but the state will stand by that and do it, so.
Oh, I have one more question. The twenty-two five, that includes, I, I see the copier, but you're saying any like desktop laptop replacements?
Yeah, good question, so what, how the I T department handles it, like, right now, we're in a, some, some department just lost a copier, so it's like, okay, I'll go to Amy, Amy, you know, we're in the crisis mode, we need to get some money, blah, blah, blah. I have some money, I don't have a ton of money, but I'll use what I have, and then if I need something, you know, Amy will try to help us do that. But that other piece that's in there, if someone needs a desktop or a laptop, it comes out of my budget.
And do you do it, like, do you have a recycling timeline, or do you do it if something just craps?
So. So our recycling is usually five to seven years?
Okay.
Okay. That's with desktops and laptops.
Okay, thanks.
What, I love this question, so how many people do you want in your department? Like ideal, perfect world?
I would love to have a, a security analyst.
Security analyst?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then how about another, and how about, but how about a, just, I mean, just a basic tech, but.
A desk, a desktop guy.
Desktop solutions?
Yeah, that's security type, I mean, he'll be do, or she'll be doing security, but that would be, you know, part of that process, is that, you know what, you take all those calls that are for desktops. And then we could segment, you know, Brett and put him on the server side, and then I could be on that administrative side, you know, with policy driven things, so on and so forth. So it's really, I think, one person would, would be fit, but it would be a, it'd have to be a qualified like security person to take our, all our security environment and manage that.
And that would take the, the user, I mean, it's interesting, the, think of users being town residents, the people that we serve, right? But your users, your clients are really internal, right? So, so that would take the user experience internally here to, to a completely, another level inadequate, and take us, and prep us for, how long would you say? Would that be something you could carry forward for ten years?
That one person, you mean?
Yeah, is that? Building intake, because I'm considering, considering what Sean was talking about, you know, you have to be ever more wary of all this, all the requirements and the challenges we're going to be facing from outside adversaries going forward, so.
It would definitely have to be a person, you know, and now universities have these cybersecurity and cyber assessment degrees that are out there, so it would take that type of person to come in, and it would be to nurture that person, not to be, you know, don't forget, they're coming at the ground floor, and you probably know this, is that you got to keep them on staff for ten years or so.
Yeah, it's acquisition cost.
I don't know anything about this space, but I wonder if that's an opportunity for a regional collaboration with other towns.
As long as they're on the same platform, Eric?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, it's also, but it's a physical presence need as well, right? When we got desktops.
Yeah, for that piece, what Chris, Chris was bringing up is that you, you are want to kind of give them dual responsibilities, or that person dual responsibilities, because there are, there are hardware and software issues every day that hit us, that need to go, you know, get channeled, so that we can free us, free us up and do another task as well.
We could do it with Avon or the Board of Ed or Granby or Canton.
Yeah, it's a good thought.
If I could just add, so right now, we do have, the technology task force is engaging in some benchmarking for us with towns and boards of ed that are currently a shared or combined department. And I know in the past, we've talked about, you know, my past experience in a shared financial services model, where you get more specialization, I had also previously worked in a shared I T model as well. And similarly, you do have the opportunity of more specialization, because perhaps you have a security person or a network administrator who is being deployed to perhaps go work on a board of ed project for the morning, then maybe in the afternoon, they're coming back and working for the town. So just, again, sometimes you're, you have that same number of people, but again, getting more efficiencies, so more specialization, being able to look for people with a different skill set. So very grateful that the tech task force is currently looking at some models, so I do think that, you know, more shared services in the area of I T will be something we'll be talking about more in the upcoming year.
I suspect so.
Any other questions?
I just want to say that it's amazing that you two manage all the, for the town, just.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In fact, we have finance.
All right, now that you guys are all warmed up.
How much is the board of finances budget going up? Just kidding.
All right, I'll take you through the.
It's funnier when you guys aren't here.
I'll take you through the financial services. So as part of financial services, we have the accounting office, we have our tax office, we have our assessors office, and then we have the board of finance budget. So the total proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-one is nine hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars, or an increase of five point six percent. So you can see that each department's breakdown is listed there, the two that probably stick out the most are the finance office, office, which is our accounting office, at forty-seven thousand, thirty-six dollars, or twelve point seven two percent. And then you'll notice that the assessors office actually has a decrease of five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars, or two point one percent. And I'll take you through those when I get to the budgetary highlight slides. We have eight point eight three budget F T Es, and then under services and programs, we provide basically the overall general financial administration for the town, so the treasury function, the payroll function, accounts payable, trust management, our investments procurement, and then overall general accounting. We have the assessors office, obviously does the property assessments, and then our tax office takes care of the collection of the taxes. Our areas of focus for fiscal year twenty-one to maintain our triple A bond rating and adequate reserves, and there's definitely a relationship between those two. Right now, our general fund, fund balance for a triple A rated committed, community is fifteen and a half percent. At the March seventeenth meeting for the board of finance, we actually are going to be discussing their position on general fund reserves, where they feel the balance should be, what that balance should be in relation to capital reserves, things of that nature. We're also focusing on our implementation of our new financial management system, so excited about this. We have our go live date for our financial, financial module of the system of October of two thousand twenty, and then the H R and the payroll modules are going to go live in July of two thousand twenty-one. We're going to continue to implement procedures to address the auditor's management comments. The last time I presented to you all, and I presented the audit, I don't know if you remember, but some of the comments were a new capital asset management system, positive pay, and accounting procedures manual. So those are all things that are going to be taken care of with the Munis implementation. And then the last one was the fraud risk assessment, which is currently on the capital plan. We had it on the capital plan for fiscal year twenty-one, but due to staff capacity with the implementation of the accounting system, we moved it out to fiscal year twenty-two. It's just too much to handle at one time. Continue to review policies and procedures for quality effectiveness and efficiencies. So a lot of this actually comes with the Munis system as well, I'm so excited about this, I want to like do a demo for you guys, but that'll bore you. It's probably more exciting for me. We have completed policies over the last couple of years, our capital assets policy, our purchasing policy, our pension investments policy, our debt policy, and then our capital and C N R policy. And the remaining policies that we still have to review in fiscal year twenty-one are fund balance policy, our non-lapsing spending policy, and our investment policy, so those are to come. We're looking to maintain our tax collection rate above ninety-nine percent and continue to decrease the amount of outstanding tax balances due. We did see some progress with this, with the notification that we were going to be doing tax sales, a lot of people, just with the notification alone and not actually going through with the sale, did come in and pay some outstanding balances, so that helped us a lot last year. Continue to value property fairly and in a timely manner. We actually have a new assessor who has some proactive ideas in this arena, and is trying to refine what we do. So in the, later on, my last slide on the service improvements, we'll talk about how she wants to do this. So under budgetary highlights, there is a forty-eight thousand dollar increase in our full-time salary line account. For those of you that were not here last year, the majority of that reflects the full year cost of our accountant position in the finance office. So we were approved an accountant position for fiscal year twenty, but the person was only starting January first of two thousand twenty. So only a half, a half year of cost related to that position is in the fiscal year twenty budget, so for fiscal year twenty-one, we'd like to keep them for the full year, so we're going to ask for the rest of their salary. And there's about forty-eight hundred dollars related to step increases. There was a decrease in the assessors' full-time salary line account by seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars, and as I mentioned, there was a transition in staffing in our assessors office, our present assessor had left in July of nineteen, who was replaced with a new assessor who was promoted from within, and then there was just a shifting in the whole department, so that we were able to achieve some savings.
Amy, just go back to the accountant, that was agreed upon to do it that way with the board of finance, correct?
Right.
So that wasn't a, we, we were very transparent with that, that we, we all agreed it was important, and what we wanted to find a way to feather it into the budget as we've done in the past.
Right, so when we originally proposed that last year, we actually proposed it was as a shared position between the town and the board of education, but due to the budgetary constraints, the board of education couldn't afford it. So you all allowed us, and the board of finance allowed us to keep it as a half year and then increase the cost this year. Under fiscal year twenty-one trends and challenges, continue to monitor the state's ongoing fiscal challenges and impact to the town, this is always ongoing. There's had, it's been a lot of new construction, mainly related to the apartment buildings that add to the grand list and the population, and then with this, we've had, we've seen some increase in staff time related to the processing of assessments, field inspections, tax fillings, collections, and a huge uptick in returned mail, so we're trying to work through that. And then also ongoing is monitoring the cyber, cybercrime and proactively protect town assets as well as employee financial information. I have a brief example that I'd like to share, just showing how important internal controls are. We had an employee that emailed the H R department asking for their direct deposit to be changed. A blank form was sent to this person, our blank direct deposit form, it came back to us via email, completed. And when I mean completed, I mean including social security number. We did the third party verification, actually reached out to the employee, never came from the employee. So, internal controls, super important, so that'll be my pitch for next year's broad risk assessment too, so just remember that. Fiscal year twenty-one C N R project, this you've seen over the last couple of years, but in two thousand twenty-two grand list, we're going to have our revaluation. In fiscal year nineteen and in fiscal year twenty, about a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars has already been appropriated for this purpose. The total cost is expected to be about three hundred thousand dollars, so we'll be asking for the remaining appropriations this year for sixty thousand, and then another sixty thousand in fiscal year twenty-two and in twenty-three to fund this project.
This is revow light, right?
Excuse me?
This is the revow light version, not the full?
No, this is the full.
Is it the full? I thought the full cost more than this.
Well, I'll get to that. The last revow we did was the revow light.
That was real? What was I saying?
So the service improvement request that I mentioned is for some field work inspections for the cost of twenty-five thousand dollars. So our department is asking for a contractor to assist with some field work inspections for some new developments and miscellaneous building permits that are in excess of those that can be completed by town staff in a timely manner. So anything that couldn't be addressed in prior years, it basically all waited until the revow process to be done. So the revow process is every five years, so that's not really an efficient manner of building grand list growth. So with doing these field inspection services, we'll be able to do it sooner and capture the growth sooner, and it also reduces our revow costs because they're not doing it. And it's also a way to take advantage of some opportunities from our audit services, I don't know if you remember, last year we started this, we put in a request for some audit services for the personal property audits. And as we send out our contractor to do these personal property audits, they get to look around to other properties, and they have questions, and they've been bringing that stuff back to our assessor, who can then follow up. Well, without staff capacity to follow up in a timely manner, we'd like to be able to use this contractor to do some of that work as well. So for twenty-five thousand dollars, we'd get an estimated thousand dollars worth of field inspections, and it's estimated to increase the grand list by about one point seven million. And in speaking with our assessor, this is a super, super low conservative estimate. It would likely exceed that, far exceed that, but for being conservative, one point seven.
Well, did they ever, without naming specific property, did they ever sort of anecdotally say the types of things that they see out there, like that are not correctly evaluated, evaluated, or have increased in value because of some sort of bigger, more economic?
I think it ranges, so I think as our new assessor is diving into the records, she's seeing stuff that doesn't make sense that she would like to explore. In addition, I think for the audit purposes for personal property, it goes, it's commercial and personal actually, because they have the field cards, they know the neighborhood, they, it's typically, somebody that you hire for a contracted service is typically somebody that lives in the area, so they're kind of familiar with it. So it's just having that not. So it's just having that knowledge and knowing what to bring back. So there's nothing, there's nothing targeted about it. It's just, oh, this seems a little off. You might want to look into this.
Amy's being very diplomatic here. What what's come to to our attention is something that I thought we had addressed numerous times over the last ten years on this board, in that we we corrected a loophole years ago where the building permits were not making it to the assessor's office. So that was closed, unfortunately.
So you didn't know where to go to look?
Well, unfortunately, what we've learned is that there has not been capacity to do anything with that information. Therefore, when you renovate your kitchen, it's not translating to an increase in the property valuation. So folks have been getting a deal for five or ten years, depending on when they get re-inspected as part of the grand list. So this is closing that gap. So this is really not a service improvement. This is what I thought should have been happening for the last decade, and I was told by prior administrations was happening. So this is not Amy and Maria's fault. This is a great, another example of professional management coming in and closing a loophole that never should have been there in the first place. This is revenue that should have already been coming into the town, that we have not staffed that department properly in the past. So this is Amy's really fiscally responsible solution to staff that that department, to go get the revenue that we are owed from a taxes. People renovate their homes, they do things, that's fine. There is a corresponding increase that's supposed to go with it. So when we experience these lumps every five and ten years, you'll notice the number two point six six is up a lot, because our assessor is doing a phenomenal job of capturing revenue that should have been captured in the past. So this, again, is not a service improvement, as far as I'm concerned.
So going back, fantastic sermon. So the, yeah, so the, but if you start at the beginning, so I just understand, really, it's how I understand the basics. So the building permit gets issued, the building permit should then, in theory, goes to your office. And then when the project is done, assessors' office, the project is done, there should have been somebody who went out there and followed up and said, hey, this kicked, this triggered something. So it wasn't necessarily not, it wasn't necessarily the assessor not having the proficiency, the expertise, the training. It was just an issue of time and process, failure in the process and the time.
Correct.
That's a very good summary. Very good summary.
I wasn't preaching it, but I was just trying to break it down into simplistic, tiny Peterson-esque bites.
I get fired up unnecessarily for a lot of things, but this is a particularly frustrating issue that I hope the board of finance works with us on, because a former member of this board and I were both under the same impression that this was already closed. So I would imagine that it'll be news to our former first select woman that this, this is an area that needs to be closed as well. Because we've been told in these rooms, in these meetings, in prior years, that this was in fact happening, not by anybody in this room. So this is, this is something that absolutely needs to get closed up quickly.
I think you kind of sold it for me.
You should have heard it the first time they told me about this.
I guess I'll just close up with, you know, the sixty-five thousand dollars in in revenue that we're expected to get, obviously, another low estimate, offset by the cost of twenty-five thousand dollars, it would be a minimal of forty thousand dollars net revenue to the town.
Thank you for addressing this, Amy. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And just quickly, Amy, can you just briefly touch on another good concrete example of how the first personal property audit actually paid for the contracted services?
So the personal property audit that was authorized last year, I believe it was another twenty-five thousand dollars. The assessor has, or not the assessor, the contract has, the contractor has done one so far, and it already paid for.
Oh, wow.
What we spent.
Wow.
Now you're just showing off.
It's a really good concrete example.
I do have a question for you on the revenue side. I'm interested in the investment income. Nineteen, we showed six twenty rounding. We're showing for for six months, four fourteen, when we budgeted four hundred. I know, obviously, the rate environment is, has been bouncing around, but perhaps an area for the board of finance to dive into further?
Sure.
Because we've got a lot of money invested, right?
We do. So for that line item in particular, because things are so all over the place right now, we actually reached out to FIA, who's our pension investment advisor, to get their feel on, you know, we're already at over budget. We were at six hundred thousand dollars last year, you know, where do you see this going? So the estimate that's in there right now is actually based on their knowledge and what they felt we should do for of a conservative nature. I had to reach out for some help on that one.
But again, that's that's one for the board of finance.
Right. Yep. Anything else?
All right, thanks, Amy. Why don't we do one, one more and then take a short break?
Perfect. Sounds good.
One more and then a short break.
I already messed it up.
Come back.
A management budget? This one's going to be fun. This one's got a big increase.
But a very good reason.
Hey, Mike. Mike, you still there? He muted himself.
Oh, no.
Surprise.
Yes, I'm still here.
Sorry. Eric, you know what?
Do you want to do a break now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Let's come back at about thirty-five.